Ryan.
So Gary.
Tuesdays. I can't tell you how much I missed last week.
Me too, actually. I was sad to miss it. It's been a fun one to do every week.
So is that a sauna behind you?
It is.
Hey, that looks like the one we have in Lions Bay. Looks a little bigger though.
It's like two person type.
Yeah, it's the same size. We get the same one in Lions Bay. Yeah, exact same one.
I love it. It's my daily memorial every morning.
Yeah, you know what I noticed is I noticed that I have the lights on with the different colors. I notice I can feel it in different parts of my body.
Yeah, I have that attachment, but it doesn't, it doesn't work. So I don't get to use that. I've never experienced it. That sounds cool.
So what are we doing today?
Today I wanted to go a little, a little different. I mean, not really, but I want to go through the practice. And then I'd love to get some more shares, some like if anybody like experiences people have from it or questions.
Let's do that. If somebody has a fantastic experience after we go through the practice today, let us know at the end and then we'll bring you up specifically in the comment.
Or shitty one. Yeah, or shitty experience, you know?
Or shitty experience, yeah.
Bring it out. Let's talk about it. But yeah, that would be cool. So today is just going to be kind of some CO2 exposure like we normally do.
Did it stand laying?
We're gonna be seated.
Okay, seated. Can you grab me a chair? Yeah, one of those. That's your.
And then I want to finish with a little bit of light breath. I've been working on a maneuver. I'm going to try to demo it. And we'll see how well that goes if anybody can see it. But it's kind of like, it's kind of like totally twisted combined with alligator breath. If you or anyone knows what that is, so.
I'm not sure what alligator breath, but I have crocodile tears.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, you got that and you got the totally twisted. So we're good.
Yeah, I got crocodile tears. It's cortisol, cortisol tears. They, you know, tears release cortisol.
Tears release cortisol. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, they do.
Huh.
Yeah. That's why they call them crocodile tears.
Gotcha.
Okay. Got my chair.
Cool.
Okay.
Okay. As always, I want to do a little bit of mobilization of the breath, the area of the breath that we have. So we can kind of get a little bit more access to that. So what we're gonna do for today is just a little bit of air packing and these rotations. When I rotate, I want to think of like pushing the scap, pushing the arm and then pulling this arm and pulling the scap. So we're kind of in this like big rotation like that. So here and let's switch. So yeah, to the side, think laterally, just kind of creating, creating rotation. Yep. That's it. So we're gonna do breath in, air pack, hold the breath.
Breathing with my hands? Is it fist? Is it hand? Is it?
I like to push.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Yep. So we'll go, let's air pack first and then we'll go through the movement until we get a little bit of air hunger. And then you're gonna release when you exhale, you're gonna use the breath on the exhale to bring out the lungs more. So it's inhales. Cool.
Okay.
First we air pack, we hold and then we go through even, alright?
Through nose, right?
Inhale through nose, yep. And then we'll sit through the mouth.
And right hand first or left hand first?
Um, let's go left hand first.
Which is yours? Which is your right?
Which is my right? So you're opposite, right?
Yeah.
Oh, it's, oh, same. Okay. Okay.
Yeah.
We're both near. Okay, okay. Alright. Deep breath into the nose. Pull, little bit more, sip some. Hold. And as much as you can go, we're holding the breath. You're just gonna kind of create space. Trying to push, pulling that elbow behind the back, pushing, releasing, pushing off of the scap, finding different areas of tension. You can bend.
I'm still holding, right?
Yeah, you can still hold. Yep, still go. And then when you're ready to, you'll exhale, exhale and ring out the lungs. Inhale. Exhale. Inhale. Exhale. Two more. Inhale. Exhale. Last one. Inhale. Exhale. Cool. Alright. Same thing, same breathing pattern and movement, but we're gonna extend and flex the spine. So I like to do it with my fingers interlaced, base the skull, okay? Kind of like in anti-gravity, kind of pull up into it. And then we'll take our air packing breath. And then while we're holding, we're gonna extend and you're gonna flex, bringing the chin to chest, bringing your elbows as low as you can get onto your thighs. Don't pull on the neck, just flex. And then we're gonna extend and we'll repeat that until you need to breathe or until I call it.
Okay.
And then we'll use the breath, okay? Same thing though. Interlace. Alright. Deep breath into the nose. Dip. Build up. Hold and go. See if you can get two more and then we'll exhale on the way down. Last one. Exhale, release, flex a little bit further. Inhale all the way up. Move the lungs. Exhale. One more. All the way up. And release and relax.
Yeah, I could feel, I could feel it pushing around the diaphragm, especially above the diaphragm this time.
Yeah, cool. Yeah, that's where, yeah, we're just trying to get that little bit more capacity because sometimes we, we come into a breath practice and we've been sitting all day or just like in a position where we need a little bit more capacity from the lungs. So it's good to start with something simple like that. Or some of the maneuvers are really good too. So we've done those before. Cool. So today is going to be kind of a timed, timed breath hold. We're kind of doing is just, we're gonna keep it kind of, kind of light because the main thing I want to get into is that there's that totally twisted alligator breath at the end. So this is just a little bit of exposure. It's gonna be an inhale retention. So we're gonna just be full inhale, hold, and I'll kind of guide you through each step. So.
Okay.
Alright. So let's just start, let's start with eyes closed. And then what I want you to do is I want you to just start to calm yourself with nasal breathing. So just try to release an exhale that is about eight seconds long. And I'm not gonna count it. I just want you to kind of feel what eight seconds would feel like. And then when you inhale, it's gonna be a little quicker. It's gonna be like two seconds. So it's one, two inhale, but full. So it's kind of quick. And then out the nose, slow. And then in, one, two, and out, slow. I want you to repeat that. I want you to feel the body start to relax, releasing tension so that we can get more access from the diaphragm, so the heart rate slows, so that we can hold for longer. Every exhale, you're deepening your relaxation and go further into the relaxation. Relax the jaw, the shoulders. Just keep this rhythm going. We're gonna go for about 30 more seconds here. We're gonna get into our first inhale retention. We're gonna hold our breath on the inhale. It's gonna be the lightest one. Long, let's lengthen that exhale even more. Slow it down. Just turn the faucet off barely. It's just slowly releasing. Longer exhale. Try to get even longer. We're gonna do one more big breath. All the way up, fully out, push everything out. Keep going, all the air. And then when you come in, we're gonna go 100% inhale, all the way up and hold. And hold the breath. Now, I want you to just pay attention to where there is some resistance in your thorax. And maybe it's in your neck, your shoulders, your ribs. Just stay here with it. For some people, this might be a tough hold, but this is our leggast one so far. And now release through the mouth. Open the jaw.
I almost passed out, dude. I got a whole DMT release there. I could barely stand up.
We missed a week. We can't miss a week again.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, literally, I'm like, oh shit, I hope I don't fall.
Here we go. Yeah, just sit back. We're, we're, we're just starting. I don't want to lose you yet.
Good. Let's do it again.
We're doing, yeah, we're doing it again. We're going again. You're like, more this time.
More.
Good. Alright, bring it, bring it back in. Now we're gonna go in the nose, out the mouth, same, same rhythm, okay? So nice, quick. Relax the jaw, relax the lips, let the air come out, make it audible. Now close the eyes, look inward. Identify the tension. Keep going. We're gonna go for a little longer here. And when I say identify the tension, it can be physical, but also look at what you have going on emotionally, mentally. And see what tension is arising. So that when we hold this breath, I want you to bring that tension right to the front. So it makes the breath hold harder, but it makes the resilience, the, we get from it increase as well. So let's think about that right now, whatever it is, be a stress emotional, could be work, could be physical stress, could be an injury. I want you to bring that to the forefront of the mind. And I want you to feel the difference on this hold. And three. Two. And then breath all the way into the top, as much as air as you can fill. Get all of it in there, all the way 100% and hold. Now eyes closed, either feel into that physical sensation, that discomfort, that stress. It could be grief. Just feel into it. Keep it on the forefront here. If you need to release, I want you to focus your release. I want you to focus your release as also releasing the hold that that tension has on you. I want you to feel it actually relax and release its grip on you when you exhale. If you're still with me, if you can hold through, we're gonna go a little bit further on this one. But I want you to feel what it's like to focus your attention on the tension. And how much harder your breath hold may become. And then how much release you get when you exhale that tension. 10 seconds. Three. Two. Release fully.
Wow.
What are you feeling?
So for me, it's a, it's a tourist day. I can feel my heart really active. It's what I want, what I don't want. I could feel it all in my heart. And then as I was holding it, letting it go, I could feel it dropping from my heart into my solo plexus.
That's great, man. That's, 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 that's what we, that's what we're looking for, you know, like that, that attention to what, what you may or may not want. Most of this, this kind of practice is what you don't want. And just kind of more of a realization that you can control a little bit more of the outcomes on those things than we think. So let's do one more round on that, okay? So now mouth only in the beginning, and this is our longest hold. We're gonna go two seconds in. Full, 100% exhale. Big pull. Make some audible noises if you want, especially if you're watching this at home and you're by yourself. Make as much audible exhale. Sometimes I'll even buzz my lips. Buzzing the lips is nice too. It's that vagus nerve, one of the branches of it. So it's really calming and nice. Feel the vibration from deep and each round move that vibration of that, of those audible sounds up a little bit higher into the brain. Let's play with pitch a little bit. Move that vibration up and down through the body. Two more of these. You can get a little louder if you want. Buzz it up into the back of the head, into the, into the mind. One more in. Right here in the forefront of the mind, right between the mind's eye and the eyebrow right here. And then breathe it in and hold. Deep breath in, all the way up. Tap into it again. Tap into those vibrations. Tap into that original tension. And I want you to globally try to assess and sense this feeling. Totally from outside the body, almost feel like you're stepped back and you're observing yourself, feel you're observing yourself, hold this breath. All the tension you get from the breath hold or from the thought, the vibrations, I want you to sense it all from afar. See if you can do that. Stay with this one. A little longer on this hold. 10 seconds. Big, big breath out. Push it all out. Hold briefly right here. Just hold on this one. Babysit over there and hold. Babysit over there and hold. Two more. Last one. Come back to center there. Feeling alright there, Gary?
Yeah, actually I was, I was going out again.
You're going down?
Going down. It got me kind of going forward. It was like, I'm pretty good at holding myself during a psychedelic experience.
Yeah.
But that, that I almost went out there.
Okay. Alright, well, good thing we were doing it seated.
Trust me, I've done it from, I, I've done it from standing all the way to the ground. Well, I just realized I had a chins incident just like Jason. Mine was in 2004. I went down creatures.
Oh, you did? What, you blacked out? What were you doing? Breath work?
Well, I, it was a near death experience I know now, but at the time I just thought I had a few much, a few too many drinks or something. But looking back at it, I didn't, I wasn't really, I, I didn't really have much. But at the time, I, I needed to explain it to my brain, so.
So the, I want to do the next part, which is the more like really calming breath practice, alligator breath in general, if you've ever heard of it. It's a pretty, it's a pretty common breath practice. And what it does is it kind of restricts our chest a little bit from breathing into the diaphragm. And I've kind of just done this like, I naturally kind of went into like a, like a inverted fashion, totally twisting fashion maneuver. And it just felt good. So it's not really like classic either one of them. It's kind of just like what I'm kind of naturally doing. I'll show you what I was doing. So if I can get this to a good angle, see, maybe it'll be better this way.
Oh, hands and knees?
It'll be actually on your belly. So you're here on the belly. Hopefully people can see, but I'll, I'll demo what I'm, I'll demo what my arms are doing afterwards. I'm just gonna do, I'm gonna do left over right, but when I say left over right, it's actually left behind right. But it's when you're on your belly, it's left over right. So I do it. And then kind of the same, then I do left under right. And then I'll just drop into that, my elbows, my body is dropping to the left side.
Right.
It's really kind of a little bit hard to explain, but I said, this is probably gonna be a little difficult. Hey, you look pretty good. But then your head's kind of gonna be looking like neutral down. So if I show you here, it looks, looks like that. Yeah, it looks like it's totally twisted on the top.
Yeah, it's totally twisted.
Yeah. So it's totally twisted.
I've done this on the ground many times.
What?
I've done this on the ground many times after passing out.
Well, let's hope you don't pass out today. We might lose you, might, might lose you once, but at least you'll be safe on the ground.
Yeah, if I, if I don't come back for a minute, just yell Lisa.
Yeah. We'll just, yeah, I'll just, we'll just, I'll bring some people up. We'll talk to some other people. But so, yeah, so that's the maneuver. And then all we're doing here is into the nose. And I want, I want you to focus on while you're doing it. Is I want you to focus on breathing into the belly. So then what this does is allows, we're, we're really restricted in the chest. So it's really drawing it into our, our diaphragm. It's, it's making it so we can understand.
Why don't we twist a bit too? Why don't we put one foot over for a complete?
Yep. That's, yeah, that's how I do it. Just how you have it right there. So, yeah, that's perfect. And then head just kind of chills in the other side of the direction. So now we're gonna go nose inhale. And I want you to focus on just expanding into the ground. Because also at this point, we're getting like a double organ massage here. So we're breathing it into the ground. The diaphragm is pushing the organs down. And then as you exhale, release with the mouth. So it's inhale full, about five seconds. I'll start a little count in a second. Pause for about two seconds and then exhale. Like let the elasticity of the muscles and the tension just fall into that, that exhale. So let's begin. I'll do a couple of counts here. So deep inhale, five, four, three, two, hold. Back out. In, in, four, three, two, one, hold. Out. Two, one. In, four, three, two, one, hold. Out. Let it fall out fast. And then repeat in, bigger breaths. Trying to breathe deep into that and mainly into that side you feel more pressure on, and expand into the ground. We're trying to stop the breath from reaching into the chest for this practice. Just really, really relaxing. We release, let your body fall into the earth. Get that deeper massage. We're gonna go three more here. Last two. Last one, fully exhale, push everything out, really, really try to get, flex your abs up. Push out, but I want you to hold. And then from that position, I want you to move the belly like you're breathing. Move that belly in and out, but we're held. So you're just holding your breath and you're moving the belly, contracting and relaxing. Keep going, three, two, contract more, relax more. Last one, squeeze it hard, deep breath in. Hold again, right here in this hold. And now let's repeat that again, drawing in with the breath held on the inhale retention. And now we're going in and out, contracting and relaxing. And then release the breath out. Let's switch sides.
This is awesome.
Yeah, you like it? Good. It's one of my favorite, just like really, really opens it up and also super relaxing. So now let's go again. We're gonna start with that breath pattern for five, four, three, two, one, hold. Release it out. In, in, four, three, two, one, hold. Release. In, in, four, three, two, one, hold. Release. Keeps that pattern going again. Now we'll kind of switch sides. So you should feel a difference in where the focus of the earth, the gravity is on the, on the diaphragm, on the belly, on the organs. Feel that massage, feel that release every time you breathe. I'm trying to sink deeper into that exhale every time too. And now every inhale, try to push further into the earth. Kind of push your body away from the earth with your breath. And release further into it, fall into that exhale. All we're doing is we're building tension and all those respiratory muscles. Everything is just kind of going to its maximum pressure. And then you're just allowing the elasticity of the muscles and fascia to release and bring it back to neutral. Let's go two more breaths. Build the tension. We pause, we sit with the tension and then we just let it release, let the body do what it does. Last breath. All the way in. And then release it. When you exhale, you're gonna hold, exhale everything. Really push all the air out, get it all out and then hold. And now expand and contract like you're breathing and belly ends going in and out. Five, four, three, two, one. And now inhale, repeat again, full inhale all the way up. And repeat those contractions, much as you can go. Try to draw the belly as tight as you can. Pull the pelvic floor up as you draw in. Everything is kind of like drawing towards the center. And when you release, let it all go out. Pull it back in tighter, pull it up. Two more. Last one. And come back to normal breathing, unravel yourself. Maybe just come up and move a little bit. Did we lose Gary? No, he's there. Let's make sure.
Yeah, I'm with you.
It's good. Good to know.
Breathing in Pitbull in Great Dane though.
Oh, is that what you smell down there?
Yeah.
Nice. That's like my house. I got a giant, giant loaf over here. It smells too, so.
Oh, we're done?
We're done, yeah.
Oh.
Yeah, I was saying unravel yourself, come up, move a little bit.
Oh, yeah. That was fantastic. Oh my gosh.
What are you feeling?
Uh, just give me a second here. Getting head rushes everywhere. I could feel my, you know, people, they always try to get their diaphragm open, but when you push up against a pillow, laying a pillow, it forces your rear diaphragm to open. Which 99.9% of the world doesn't have a rear diaphragm function. So that's fantastic for that.
Yeah.
And the massaging of the organs. You know, you know, it's funny is I talk to people all the time. I ask medical professionals this all the time, just as a point of interest. It's like, we only, we have 10 organs inside, only three of them are muscles, the heart, stomach and the bladder. How did the rest of them work?
It's like, yeah.
It's movement. It's air. So if that diaphragm ain't working, if that pump ain't working, it's not gonna work. So this, this practice is prolific for, for getting function. People are like trying to detox their liver and their pancreas and their small intestines. And this is the best way to do it right there.
Exactly. Yeah, that's huge. I mean, it's, but yeah, it's like, when we look at like limited, people that are limited movement or desk bound, the amount of like closure we get in the organs and how many issues we have with that. And you know, digestive issues and, and toxicity and that kind of stuff.
Yeah, I feel, I feel really good. You want to bring up some people?
Let's do it.
Hey, anybody has a question about breath, put it in the comments now. So I know that this is about this part of it. Cause people ask all kinds of crazy questions. So thanks for the excellent freeing educational information. Yes. I really feel better in my liver. Want to move. So if you have a question for us, if you want to talk, share your experience also. You don't have to have a question. Well, I'm grateful for you both for being amazing. Thank you. My jaws relaxed too.
Beautiful.
Prostate exercise. Yeah, that'll work for prostate too. Yeah, absolutely. Just helped my solo plexus. That's awesome. Can't stop sneezing.
Sorry, I'm getting a charger.
If you want to talk.
Yeah.
Okay, there you go. Hold on, hold on. This should be funny. Oh, I can't add you, Ruby Jean. Ruby Jean, try to, try to, try to request live. I wanna, I wanna do it. I wanna do a Gemini sync.
Okay.
I might be, I might be pregnant. Can I still practice this? I might be, uh, I might be pregnant, can I still practice this?
Um.
Mike, Mike, do you want me to answer another?
I wanna answer, you can answer that.
Guys, yes, you want movement in pregnancy.
Yeah.
This whole thing about stopping movement, that's a bunch of crap. People that, if you go to our, our YouTube, you see Happy Baby, Happy Body, Happy Bobby, Body, Happy Baby, version one, two, and I think three. And you'll see that women are doing, mothers are doing from conception all the way through labor, fascial maneuvers, so anything breathing related like this?
Yeah, I've heard some crazy stuff with that, like, don't bend over when you're, it's like, are you supposed to pick up your child, you know?
Yeah, I, I don't know why Ruby Jean, it's not letting me bring you up. Oh, there, okay, hold on, let me try it over here, maybe because you requested. Yeah, I feel, I feel really good, I mean, I feel super good.
Beautiful man, I say, yeah, I love, I love that practice, it's a good one.
Gemini, Gemini.
Hello.
Ryan, how are you doing? Gary, I can't see you, but I know you're behind that black screen.
Oh, can you see Ryan though?
I can see Ryan. They, they show guests, they don't show you, it's whatever, it's whatever.
Yeah.
But, um, uh, Ryan, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you as well.
Um, sorry about the fan. Um, so last night, I was utilizing your breath work. Um, I was kind of going into a panic state of bringing up all thought patterns of cheating. Uh, my husband has not cheated, but I've had exes that has, so I've just, you know, that whole narrative, okay? I was going, I was getting sweaty, you know, the, the tight chest, you know, going into it. Um, I was in the bath, I really started in there, so I noticed that I was holding my breath. That's how I, when I get clammed up, I hold my breath.
Common, that's super common.
Okay, so I was just releasing it, and I just did the basic, you know, I just did the 30 seconds, hold it in, 60 seconds, that's pretty much how I, how much I could actually do that, you know? Um, and then I broke down, and then, but I breathed again, and then a little time later, I'm on the couch. Yes, I slept on the couch. Um, I like that space, sometimes they actually, I feel like we, we need space as Aquarius, very big on space. Um, uh, so I breathed in, in and out. I have a really big breath, do you have? When I'm in a panic state of holding, what's the, what, for a holder of breath, what's, what would be the best sequence to practice on?
Well, so, so many, so, um, you know, for their, so it's an interesting, there's an interesting paradigm of, of kind of how like, like, holding, holding your breath, like as like a subconscious nervous system reaction that we do, uh, from stress and that kind of stuff, and then intentionally doing it. So that there, there are, the, the reactions that the body has and the adaptations that it has are, are so much more different. But when you find yourself holding, you need to find, find a way to get back to a normal breath. So you co, the best breath that I would say you go back to is your ideal breath, which is about five to eight breaths, um, a minute. So just going right back to that, and that kind of breathing pattern is gonna be what kind of resyncs you and puts you back into that, like regulates you back. Um, I wouldn't go directly into holds or anything like that at that moment, and you might not.
Cause I'm holding it, I, I'm finding, I'm, 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 you know, I, it's, for some reason, it's, um, I, I'm, I'm just holding that breath.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm noticing that it's like 30 seconds, I'm holding the breath, I'm holding, and it's not my practice, it's not a practice.
Yeah.
It's just when I'm in stress, I'm in that, um, fight, I'm, I'm in, I'm frozen.
What are you doing, basically, so? What are you doing when that happens? So we, we call email apnea is one way to do it, a lot of people that are working at the computers just realize, oh shit, I haven't held my breath for like a minute, you know, they're just typing into us, well, what are you doing when that, when your breath holds? When you realize?
Freeze, um, so it's really hard, I will, I will stay there until, I just have to force myself to go up, and then I do liver release. I, I do my liver, and I do this, and then I do my psoas, because it's, it's in my gut.
So get, switch to nasal breathing, get in those breaths, I mean, that's the quickest way.
Nasal.
Is, is, once you start to practice awareness of your breath, that's the main thing, people are like, how do I start breath work? I'm like, you just put a timer on your phone for every, every hour to just pay attention to your breath for two seconds.
Totally.
You know, that's the best, best way to start, but when you, when you do have those, those breath holds like that, that's when you want to get yourself regulated back down. And that's the best way to do this, yeah, yeah.
That's perfect, and then, um, the laying down one was amazing, I really, really, really liked that one. The, the pushing out was fantastic, so thank you so much, um, Ryan, thank you Gary for your time, I appreciate it, have a great day.
See ya, thank you.
Yeah, it, it, that was, it was, it was amazing, and, and when somebody gets into that, uh, that's a good point. The, when they're in the, on the freeze, fight, flight, and freeze, that's what it is, it's actually when they're on the computer, that computer apnea, that's actually a freeze state, that means it's a trauma state, they're exhibiting some sort of release of trauma. And I, what I would say to Ruby Jean is, is that you're actually releasing the trauma that's already there, because you're actively doing the breath work, so that those fears, those thoughts are, are trauma that's stored in your tissue, you're activating it with your breath, and it's coming out. And you can identify with it and say, oh my God, why am I having these things? Or, oh, thank you for coming up, now I get to pass you away, and how I perceptually is, is what happens with the trauma.
Yeah, that, that like, I, I do other, like other, when that kind of stuff happens is, is when you can identify, and then you can release, like you actually like, like rubbing, you know, these kind of things or shaking, those are good ways to kind of get that, get that off too, you know, it's a, when you notice that you can, you're holding your breath, you can use those tactics, which are just innate tactics to, to, um, regulate.
Yeah, for sure. So, um, um, and now the other part too is, is that when they're in that fight or flight stage, um, they have an accelerated level of adrenaline, norepinephrine, and cortisol. Oh, hi Petra.
Hi Gary, how are you doing?
Hello.
Good, you wanna talk about your experience?
Hi, and how are you?
Great, how are you?
Good, good, I'm in the backyard, I just did your breath work, I'm on day 22 of the 28 Day Reset. So, uh, feeling really, really good, and really enjoy that breath work. Um, yeah, I felt it really, um, very strong in, on the right side back of my heart area, and then, um, a real pounding in the front of the heart. So, yeah, that was really, really awesome, but.
The back right of your heart Petra, the right side is your intake valve, and that's opening up to receive. The front is your giving, the left side is your giving.
Okay.
So that's a, that's a receiving, and you know, it's interesting today, Petra, again, what's your astrology, when's your birthday?
Uh, November 24th, 1959.
Oh, that's right, so do you know your degree?
I think it's, um.
29 degree or 28?
I think it's one.
Oh, you're one degree, okay, so you're, oh, you're, you're, uh, November 2, are you, are you a one degree stat?
My, my ascending is one, I can't, I can't quite remember.
Yeah, yeah, cause, yeah, you sent me your chart, I wanted, now I wanna know, I see you all the time.
I know.
Yeah, yeah, so, so today's, today's, uh, today's a tourist day, which is opening up our heart, and it's sorting out what we want or what we don't want. And we're having the argument between who we used to be and who we are, we're in this fuzzy area in between, is that kind of what it felt like to you?
100%, yeah, absolutely. I, I'm, I'm really kind of struggling with where I am and where I'm going, and, and my husband is an Aquarius.
Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it's like you can't get any emotions out of him.
He, he's the 27th of, um, of January, and we're doing the 28 Day Reset together.
Wow, that's gonna be fun to watch. So, so when you're in that state, Ryan, when she's in that state, what is she, what kind of breath practice can she do throughout the day? That's really quick and easy to bring her back?
Um. There's, yeah, so there's, I would say, I would say like, like a humming type of technique, um, or the burring of the lips, that kind of thing. So I really love that, uh, I know obviously it's like if you're at work or something, you can't really be.
What does that, what does that look like, so I can do it?
So like, like if you would do like singers or anything like that. Yeah.
Kind of like that.
Like that.
Yeah, try that.
Like that, and play with, play with the notes, I mean.
Just take deep breath through the nose and then out through the mouth.
Yeah, you can, if you can't do that, you can hum. Yeah, it takes a little bit of practice.
When they were little, but now.
Exactly, yeah, yeah. Like that, that, that's like an awesome, because, you know, we have, we have like, you know, branches of the, of the things that are in the lips, and so when we, when we activate it with not only the vocal cords, but also in the lips too, uh, we just get that double whammy of, of, of toning, so.
What's a humming one that she can do, cause that's where the pineal is gonna activate, right, as well?
So I, I like this, this one, this is like my, my favorite, uh, version of humming, is I start at, at my root, and that, you know, you can work your way through the chakras, where you're just driving attention to each, each point. Um, and as you go through that, you'll, you'll just notice that you naturally change the tone, your body, your, your mind, as you move the, the vibration up into the, you know, you go up to the throat, and then you're in here, we kind of did that in that, in this last one. But using, using that, that, uh, the vibrations, trying to direct vibration, it's pretty cool how you'll change tone to, to those different areas.
Gary, show us.
Okay, yeah.
So, so just, I want you to, I want you to, just, you're gonna take a deep breath, and then I want you to, you can close your eyes, and then drive, drive the hum into your, into your base, into your pelvis.
Through the nose, in through the nose or the mouth?
Got it. And do we go chakra by chakra?
And then we'll do internal organs on the next one, or, you know, or the ribs, that area.
That's awesome.
That's.
Yeah, and you work yourself up into the heart, throat, and then, and then, um, looks the front of the forehead, yeah.
Do you start?
Thank you so much for, for your question, and looking forward to seeing you and your husband go for the 28 Day Bites with each other. Yeah, there's gonna be some fun times there for sure with an Aquarius.
Oh yeah, for sure, he's fun. But, but he loves the maneuvers and he loves everything, and, uh, and he's journaling on his, on his own in his phone, and.
Aquarius is a very versatile, like, uh, they'll, they'll write a lot, they'll communicate a lot, stuff like that, so that's really cool.
Yep, and I just do it online, so I'm trying to be out there and, and be vulnerable, you know, so.
Appreciate you for doing that Petra.
Yeah, okay.
Great Petra.
At all the time.
When I send you my chart, do I just send it to you?
Send it, say, uh, just say, send it to me, and just say Gary asked to see this from the live.
Okay, so DM you, like Gary?
Oh, no, no, just go through your human garage, they'll, they'll get it to me.
Okay, perfect, thanks a lot, thanks Gary, thank you Ryan, it was awesome.
That was interesting, yeah, so, so the idea is this with your intention to direct the, the humming or the breath to that particular area, and then just move it up the seven chakras, right?
Yeah, yeah, exactly, yeah, it's, I, I love, I love that to, to, to regulate, but to also like, sometimes you can spend a little bit extra time on different areas when you feel that tension arise.
I also do a, a practice where I breathe in, and then I see the color of the chakra, and then I feel the area, so I bring the breath to my root, I bring the breath to my sacrum, I bring the breath to my soloplexes, I bring it to my heart, so forth. And, and, and then, and then of course I've got from essential oil wizardry, I have all the chakra oils, so I take that, oh, and I can feel it, like everything just goes there, that, I do that every morning, I do that every morning before the lives, so that I'm in tune.
I love that, yeah, I, essential oils, there, like, there's a couple blends that I'll use for just breath to get a little bit more open, and so, it's such a, a nice way to start.
Uh, essential oil wizardry has one, well, I use peppermint, that works really good, but they have one called respire, and it's got, it's got a whole bunch of ingredients, including peppermint, but including eucalyptus and stuff like that. You put it on, it's like, whoa.
Yeah, yeah, that's awesome, I love that.
Okay, let's, uh, let's go one more person. Oh, let's bring up another Gemini.
Let's do it Gemini a little bit.
For a Grandmaster Gemini.
Does.
And she's a body worker.
Question here, does Gary seem irritated?
I know, I don't think so.
I don't think so either, I don't know, maybe I'm not seeing it.
Grandmaster Gemini, meet Grandmaster Gemini.
Hello, how are you doing?
Good, how are you?
Great.
I bet your Chiron is not 29 degrees.
No, 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 he's a, he's a, he's what you call a natural Grandmaster, which means that he's, he kind of got life in this happy-go-lucky kind of, I'm gonna do life, where Jude, you're like, if it doesn't happen, I'm gonna kill somebody.
They call me the Hungarian hurricane, so, there you go. Alright, so my question is that, um, um, so I'm struggling with the exhale, long exhales, and I know that it's trauma fixated, cause, um, most of my very highly stressed modes always goes into freeze mode, so I'm like, I get the breath in, and it gets stuck, and, um, and then I don't go anywhere from there. And there were instances in my life where I blacked out from that state, and, um, so now if I try to do a breath work, and I try to exhale, on exhalation, I always struggle, I feel like, uh, it gets stuck somewhere in the upper chest, and the rest, it's kind of like I'm trying to go through the motion, but it's not happening.
Yeah. Um, so, have you, have you done longer breath sessions, this question, like, like, just more down regulated? Cause usually, usually that's like a beginner part where like your nervous system isn't really allowing you to, to exhale where it wants to inhale, and sometimes the CO2 tolerance issue. But you say, like, how often during the day do you, that kind of breath, or make the noise?
Well, I'm not really noticing during the day, or at least I didn't bring my awareness to that, but I am noticing when we are doing breath work now, and as you were guiding. And I know that I, some very dramatic or traumatic events happened in my life where my nervous system couldn't resolve, couldn't see an escape out of that, and it literally shut me down, and it was the most intelligent response from my body to shut me down, because that's what actually offered me an escape.
Yeah.
It's kind of like the dead animal thing, but, um, yeah, so, but now my, my body is holding it, so if I consciously bring myself into a brass work, cause I went to Thailand for a long time period of brass work workshops, and actually, it happened there that I could condition myself to go into a longer exhales, but I had to practice it day by day, and typically from there I go into this out of my body state where I go really and change the identity and
Yeah.
just weird phenomena is happening, so now when I'm just doing a light brass work, I feel like my, my consciousness is trying to either hold me in my body with a short exhale, or if I go for a long exhale, somehow I manage to get into that state, and I feel like potentially I could pop out of my body, and so that's sometimes scary too.
Yeah, for sure, it's, I mean, it, it does sound like that kind of response, um, definitely is nervous system driven if it's an exhale, uh, um, difficulty. But I, I, I just, um, I, I think, I don't know, when you're in Thailand doing breath work, if you were doing more hyperventilation style techniques, I don't know if those would be really good for what you have going on, they can be. Um, I think, I think first, getting a regulation of your breath might need, be what, what I would say, like, you may have a pretty low tolerance to CO2 too, it'd be worth like running through a test to see where, where you are with that, and if, if that was.
How do I do that?
Um, there's a couple techniques we've done on these videos, but like, you could start with just an exhale retention, see how long you can hold, you know? Um, we can do it right now if you want, we'll do like a quick one if you.
Let's try it.
Go.
Thank you.
Let's do it.
Okay, so I just do two breaths, is the easiest way, inhale, exhale, inhale, exhale, and we're gonna hold, and I'm gonna see how long you can do it for, okay?
Okay.
No, passing out.
Don't pass out. That is a, you lose a point if you pass out. Okay, okay, ready, we're gonna go deep breath into the nose. Exhale. Big breath into the nose. Exhale, release, sit just relaxed, to passive, and then hold right here. Now just see what you feel, and when I say hold, I mean the first urge to breathe, like right when you feel like, oh, I, I wanna breathe, I'm a little bit uncomfortable, then just let me know, and I'll take your time.
I tapped out.
Tapped out, okay, forty-one.
I think she's a superstar.
Yeah, she's doing alright. I'll stop you there. So that's fifty-three seconds we got to and I, I, you know, when, when you're over forty-five seconds, you're doing pretty good. And I wouldn't consider that an intolerance to.
Well, if you told me that, I would have stayed four more seconds.
I don't want you to know.
Hey Jude, Jude, you're, you're twenty-nine in your sun sign and twenty-nine in your, in your Chiron. So basically you're afraid of yourself. That's what's happening. When you leave your body, you're afraid of yourself.
Yeah, I, I, it sounds like, like, I, I feel like, yeah, we, we just need to work on some, some regulation there.
I, I don't, I don't feel like, um, I can't hold my breath. I feel like something shuts down in my chest or my solar plexus and it's not allowing the muscle to allow that expansion. So I, I try to just pace my odd breath and that, um, that kind of helps. But I can do it for only two times. And then after that, it feels like shuts down the chest or the solar plexus. And the chest rib cage is not moving. And so I was just wondering if you have any suggestion of how to regulate that consciously?
Um, I, I would say one thing is, is we look at like also your capacity of your, of your lungs. So, um, maybe getting, you know, daily practice is where it's gonna be at least ten minutes a day. Um, where it's not hyperventilation, um, it's maybe a couple holds, but mostly just like we are working on just focused on the exhale to your maximum, every breath. Every breath is your own maximum, so you're kind of retraining the nervous system to be able to, to, to allow it. Um, I mean, you could do ten minutes of just slow conscious breathing, you know? And where you're just focused on the exhale, you're, because if you look at any practice, yoga practice, any kind of like, uh, more ancient practice. When we talk about breath patterns, the exhale is the first breath. So that's the first start. So if you start focusing on, like when you're like, I'm gonna start exhale. And then you begin, like you're, that's how you begin is through your exhale. So, um, I would try nasal exhales, mouth exhales and, and just try to like, try to really just dial those in. And I, I know that'll help, but it's gotta be daily.
That's a super interesting point. The exhale, the breath starts at the exhale. Whoa, that's actually a mind trip. I never thought of that. That's a good one.
One of those saying for refrigerator magnets.
You gotta get yourself a shirt that says Hungarian hurricane.
I'm I, and I'm bringing with me to Costa Rica.
Okay. Okay, thank, thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Okay, Ryan, uh, people can follow you at the Gravity Collective. And, uh, you do do individual sessions and you have breathwork coaching sessions and online sessions that people can sign up for as well.
We got all of it. We got, uh, yeah, individual, um, mentorship, uh, retreats, all the good stuff and then.
And we have, and we have a four-part series.
Yeah, four-part series coming up. That's this month, so it'll be, we're, we're still, they're on it down, but I believe it's gonna be Thursdays at seven PM. And I think the start dates, the, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah.
We'll, we'll, we'll get it out there.
It'll be up on the events section, but people can go and start that right away.
Yeah, for sure. That's gonna be an awesome one. So you could do one, you could do all four. We recommend all four just if you can, because you learn a lot and they kind of all build on each other.
They all build on each other, yeah. If you're gonna do one, you must do all four. But if you can only do one, yeah, just do it. Yeah, it's still worth it. Each one's individually contained.
Yep.
But all four of them are, they are the series, right?
So, yeah, it's a four parts, but yeah, like you said, come to one and get a lot from it, so.
Okay, awesome. Ryan, thank you so much. I can't wait till next week and don't miss a week again.
Always. Actually, next week I'll be in Spain. We're missing it again. I don't know what we're gonna do. You're gonna pass out on the next one.
Oh, yeah, yeah, so then a week after then, okay?
Yeah.
Have a good trip to Spain.
Yeah, thank you. I'll, I'll talk to you soon.
Hey, talk to you soon.
See you everybody. Thank you.